Okay, Tom Phillips.
Here.
This is a calling roll call. Marnie Schmidt.
Here.
Allison Healy.
Here.
Jim Carty.
Here.
Kyle Marsh. And I haven't seen him yet.
No.
Oh.
Karen Roberts.
Here.
Jim Smith. Matt Kowalski.
Here.
And our student reps, Charlotte Hawley. I do, I just see her. In there. Eleanor King.
Eleanor's having wifi issues. She emailed me. So she'll try to get on, but.
Okay.
Okay. At this time.
Okay. And Aiden Naughton.
Here.
Okay.
Hi, I'm here too, Carol.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Carol, here.
Okay.
Okay, okay, we do have a quorum. Next on the, oh, I see a hand raised already. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'll move the minutes from our August 3rd. Or, excuse me. September 8th.
Okay.
Will we approve those?
Move Smith. Do we have a support? By a hand up or say it?
I'll support.
Okay, perfect, support. So move Smith, support Carty. Any discussion on the minutes?
Yes. On page one. The approval of the minutes for August 3rd. In my notes, I had Marnie as supporting the motion. But I see here it says Roberts. I could be wrong.
I think there was some confusion, confusion on timing, so it really doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay.
And then on page three. Under the public hearing. The motion was made by Carty in support by Roberts. Right now that's shown blank in the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're, okay, thank you.
That's how I remember it.
Okay.
And Marnie Schmidt did second the meeting minutes. That's in my notes as well.
Okay. Any other discussion on the minutes?
Just, just one, I'm pretty sure, all right, because I've got this wrong thinking this before, but on page two, the third paragraph from the bottom. I do not like the term transient quest. I'm pretty sure that's meant to be yes.
Yes, it's.
Could be a quest. Okay. Other changes to the minutes? Seeing no other changes. All in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
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 Uh, well, I'm sorry, it has to be a roll call vote.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote on the minutes. Okay. Roll call vote on the minutes, please, Carol.
I'm ready. Carty?
Aye.
Marsh?
Aye.
Healy?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Kowalski?
Aye. Minutes, revised minutes are approved. Next up is the approval of the agenda for tonight. Can we have someone move the agenda?
So moved.
Move Smith, is there support?
I'll support.
Support Roberts. And we, so just a bit of discussion, though, we will need to amend the agenda slightly to add an item. 10C, which is just a brief discussion over the, the request or what, during pre-arranged citizen participation. So we can just discuss that briefly, and if we want to add any feedback at that time. It'll be the time to do it. So I propose to add item 10C, discussion regarding the Gunther proposal, I guess. So, Mr. Smith, is that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Roberts?
Good.
Okay. Right. So the agenda is amended slightly, but can, I guess we'll need another roll call vote, please?
Yep. Yes. Phillips?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Marsh? Carty?
Yes.
Stewart?
Scott is no longer on board.
Yeah, we're gonna, excuse me. Schmidt?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, the agenda is amended. What's up? Four is the public hearings for tonight. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Item five, the pre-arranged citizen participation, and we do have. Some, a communication from Gunther Building Company, and I believe. We do have a brief commentary on that, so.
Jessica, can you hear us?
I, I have Natalie, I have Natalie Ciccolini as well.
Hold on a moment, Natalie. Hey Kyle, can you mute yourself for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, Jessica, go ahead.
Hi, Natalie's gonna do a lot of the talking.
That's fine.
I'm not too sure how much talking we'll need to do, but. I wasn't sure, Michelle, if you were presenting this, are we presenting what we're?
You're making, you're, you're introducing it to the planning commission, and then I'll follow up with the discussion later on in the agenda.
Okay, gotcha. So. This Natalie Ciccolini with Gunther Building regarding the 150 Jeffords Building. And we have the two business units on the first floor. And we are trying to gauge planning commission's feel for flexibility on allowing those to be residential. We have had more interest in those being residential units than we have had for business units. Especially since March. We have had one business that was pursuing one unit. For purely office space, not a walk-in type of office, but actually just pure office. And once the lockdown happens. They have since gone away. So, since that time period, we have had three or four people, though, that are interested in them being residential. So we're wondering if planning commission would allow us flexibility in being, us being able to sell them as either business or residential.
Okay, so we won't necessarily comment at this time. But like Michelle said, we get the item under 10C for discussion, so we can offer some feedback at that time.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. All right, so with that, we will move along to non-arranged citizen participation, so this is a time for anybody in the audience to speak out on any item toward, to the planning commission. Please introduce yourself and give your name and address, and I, I did forget the raise hand feature.
Yeah.
Is it, but what's that? How do we raise our hands again?
It's star nine on your keypad, or next to your username in the participant list.
Okay, so if anybody, if you would like to comment, please. Raise your hand. Virtually. All right.
Doesn't look like there's anybody.
See anyone? Am I missing anyone, Mike? I don't see anyone.
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, so not seeing anyone. We'll jump right on to reports of officers. First chairman report. As, I know I had written an email earlier, about a month or so ago, that I was going to need to miss the September and the October meeting. Obviously, I'm present for this one, but unfortunately, my item that was on the city council meeting for Ann Arbor for tonight got moved probably to the first meeting of November, which means I'll probably have to miss that meeting at that time. But I will definitely update you all at the time. I just wanted to put it out there, because I do apologize, I don't like missing too many meetings in a row. But, so it was kind of a special occurrence, I just wanted to let the commission know, and if they have any concerns in that, please let myself and Michelle know. That's really it for me at this time. Other?
Do you want to tell them about Scott Stewart's resignation?
Oh yeah, so at this time, yep, in case we have, well, Michelle just basically said Scott Stewart has resigned from the planning commission, so. So we obviously do have an opening at this time, so we'll miss Scott, he wasn't extremely vocal, but when he did contribute, we valued that, so. That was good. So anybody else knows any interested citizens, please have them apply directly to the city offices.
It will. You are going to need to. Vote on, you don't have to do it at today's meeting, but at your next meeting, who is going to be the representative to the zoning board of appeals?
Oh, thank you. Could you, yes, could you add that for the, maybe on our next business item? Yeah, because that does need to be a formal motion, so.
Scott did kind of joke in his email that maybe Marnie was just biting at the bit to get back on that.
I didn't catch that in his email.
Marnie, if you're interested in it. But we'll put it on the agenda, so everybody has a time, to be fair, everybody has time to consider the ZBI. I mean, there's a lot, not a lot of meetings for the ZBI, I mean, how many, do we typically have a year, Michelle? Four or five meetings?
Yeah, we've had very few over the last, what, year to two years, Mike?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so, not a high-profile, high-glamour job, but it is important.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so with that, briefly, if, I will ask planning commissioners, and we'll follow up with council, but are there any planning commissioner items that anybody wishes to share at this time? I'll look for, raise our hands virtually or otherwise. Not seeing any. Perhaps we'll move on to council member Smith, then. Could you please enlighten us on council activities?
Yes. The big announcement today. Our city manager, Courtney Nichols, has taken a new position. And I believe her last day will be November 10th.
The night.
That's the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
I was told that the 10th would be the last day.
Okay.
So that, she contacted all the council members personally. And then met with staff earlier. So. Can be. Big change. Yeah, she's been very good for the city and. You know, but we wish her well.
How long has Courtney, how long has she been with us?
Thirteen years.
Was thirteen?
Yeah.
Where's she going?
She took the finance director job at Delta Township, just west of Lansing.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Other, any other information from council, Mr. Smith?
No.
Okay, good. Committee reports. I don't think we've had any committee meetings in the last month. And so with that, unless Michelle, am I wrong, I don't think we have any committee updates, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nothing from, yeah, the R33 marks. Okay, all right, so with that, we'll go to Michelle's report, the community development office report. There's quite a bit of updated information in there, it looks like.
Okey dokey. Excuse me. Well, you've, you've got my report, and before I go into any updates, do you have any questions for me on the information that's in the report? Okay, seeing no hands or no vocal questions, I'm going to move on to. To verbal updates. The, basically, the one update that I have has to do with the Millennium Place condominium that. Jack Campbell brought in and that you've, that you recommended preliminary PUD approval for, and city council did make that approval. You'll recall that. That's the one that's on Grand Street, has frontage on Grand Street, has rear access off the alley. He agreed to do improvements so that that could happen. And there's that driveway that comes off Grand Street and goes under the building, so through the first floor area, in order to get to the parking lot. The fire department has determined that. There needs to be. At least thirteen and a half feet. To go under the building with a fire truck. And that's because that particular access, they're requiring it to be a fire apparatus access road. We have, we, the developer and I have asked questions, trying to understand why there has to be three fire apparatus access roads? Because Grand Street is one, alley is one, plus the building is sprinkled. But the, the fire department is adamant that it is required. And so at this particular point in time, Mr. Campbell is evaluating what his next steps are. So. The, the three options that he's looking at right now are to. Put units in that space, instead of it being a driveway through, just make it solid units on all three floors. You'd still have Grand Street and the alley, and all access would come in off the alley. He could, he could. Petition the state fire marshal, if I understand correctly, for an interpretation. Or seek other alternatives, other uses. Or just completely not do the project at all. And I don't know where he's going right now. I'm fairly confident he's not going to. Go through the time to go to the state. I think he'll move forward with something. At this point, I just don't know what that's going to be. It's going to be a matter of balancing the costs to, to figure all that out, so. I'm a little disappointed, but it is what it is, so.
Michelle, can I ask a follow-up question on that, I guess? I know we talked about briefly earlier, so, but if, so if he, yeah, it doesn't make that much sense, so if he provided just a continual street frontage of building. He doesn't, he wouldn't need a third access point, because he got the alley in the front, but because that driveway's there, it has to, like.
It's, it's, I think it's, it's a matter of interpretation. A driveway going in doesn't have to be.
Right.
If you have the other two points that are fire apparatus access roads.
So he's got two required accesses, so why does he? It does sound kind of confusing to me.
It is, but. I see that Jack is trying to connect. He said he was going to try and make the meeting. I don't know if you want to engage him currently, or if you want to wait until later.
No, probably not at this time, because it's probably would be appropriate.
Probably a good idea.
I mean, I, I would just.
Yes, Jim, thank you.
I, I was just wondering, Michelle, could you give any sort of an explanation, even if it's very basic, about what? Fire. Sites for this requirement, why they believe this is necessary?
It's been asked, and. It, the answers are not forthcoming, other than this is what the code requires.
Well, I'll just say that, I don't know if this is my lawyer hat on or my planning commission hat on, that's not an acceptable answer.
It's, it's frustrating. I will. I agree, it's frustrating.
Because you could build a thing across that full frontage, and not, you don't need that access.
I know.
Just because it's there, yeah, I.
It, it, we all know that codes get interpreted. Excuse me.
But that's, that's fine. If you're going to interpret, though, you should be able to point to a part of the code and say. I interpret this as requiring this, and here's why.
Now, both Don and the chief have said that they would be happy at any point to come and talk to the planning commission, not just for this, but in general, they are always happy to come and talk to the planning commission. If there are questions. I can extend the invitation, if that's something you would like.
Well, I think.
I have a lot of experience with.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, it's Tom. I didn't know who you were the first time, because I just saw your phone number.
Oh, sorry. I have a lot of experience with this. The applicant, my suggestion, based on my experience, is that he should ask the, the fire department in writing. To cite the code sections that they're referring to. And he'll either be able to do that, or he won't, or that, at least they'll have, be able to have a discussion about the same thing, and not wander around in circles. This happens all the time with building department issues. And it's common courtesy for a municipal agency to, to be able to cite the sections they're referring to.
Yeah, and that's all I'm saying. I'd like to be able to see.
Yeah, that's what Jim's saying.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, perhaps that's worth exploring a little bit more, but I guess, Michelle, I would say maybe at this point, right. I mean, we offered some general comments, but I mean, if, if, that, or, wait, Mr. Campbell, I forgot his last, I don't want to refer to my first name. If you would like to come and present and ask some of those questions to us, as a, you know, for a petition or some, I mean, for the change, we could do that, but I don't want to just generally comment on it without having fire and everybody else.
Right.
But, interesting, okay.
That should be between him and his architect and the, and the, and the fire marshal.
Yeah, and then we could be, right, I don't think we should necessarily get involved with that at this point, so. Okay, other, sorry, interrupted, Michelle, other updates?
Dollar Tree should be, they are moving toward getting their building permit. Encore is the same way. Excuse me. Case-based project is done. They, they've got their. Request for closeout. The landscape inspection's been done. They should be moving into their new building anytime. We're talking, what, that's been a year, so. The one other update I have for you is the red brick buildings, 8099 and 8093 Main Street, have been purchased, and they've been purchased by Mr. Brower.
Is that Jim's announcement?
No, Jim's announcement was Courtney taking, the city manager taking the position.
Okay.
Well, you know, the nice thing about that is that, right in that alley next to it, there are already bike racks.
And they're well-used. And are very well, you sometimes fall on the weekend, so. Yes, we appreciate that.
Okay. So I know that he is planning to do. To take out all the restaurant equipment. And it will be retail on the first floor of both buildings. There are currently. Apartments. But, one apartment in each building on the second floor. He is planning to add a second one in each building. And all of those uses are permitted by right, and he'll go through a zoning compliance process. But if there should be any changes to the physical exterior, then those have to be run by. Site plan review committee, so I'm not anticipating anything at this particular point, other than maybe new paint. But. They will be putting a new roof on the building. And I expect things like that will happen within the next month or so.
Is it, there's a third floor in each of those buildings, right?
No, only two floors.
The hardware store is three, but I think it goes down.
Hardware store is three, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Michelle at this time? Don't see any hands up, virtually or otherwise. Okay, great. All right, I'm moving right along, communications. We don't have any other communications tonight. The old business item, so moving back to the short-term rentals, so I believe we will have Michelle do a little rundown of this first.
So actually, I'm going to have Michael do this for you, okay?
Okay. So Michelle, or Michelle and I need to ask some minor clarification from the commission about the motion to recommend approval of the short-term rental and bed and breakfast in text amendments. So, as you may recall, staff forwarded. Comments for updates to the draft from Commissioner Schmidt to commission members, which we also presented. At last month's meeting. However, through the course of the discussion, and in the eventual motion to recommend approval, those changes weren't identified. And so while most of the changes are copy edits, updates to spelling and grammar that Michelle and I can incorporate into the draft. Some changes are more substantive, and we felt that we would need a recommendation from the commission in order to include them. And so, those, those two changes specifically are the change in the term bed and breakfast to bed and breakfast in. And a change into the wording of the requirement for an annual zoning compliant permit renewal for both. Short-term rentals and vacation rental housing. So regarding the bed and breakfast in terminology change, that decision is up to the commission. Staff don't feel as though we would administer the requirement any differently. However, it does seem like that the state building code does use the term bed and breakfast, and not bed and breakfast in. And staff does not have any comments on the proposed changes to the annual permit requirement. So, if it was the commission's intent to recommend approval to council with the changes that Commissioner Schmidt suggested. Staff would ask for a motion just identifying that those changes are recommended as well. And it could simply be just a supplemental recommendation. In a motion. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I, this is really late in the game for me to raise this. Last time, but I missed, since I missed the first meeting when this was presented, I just wasn't sure that some consensus hadn't been built around. The aspect of vacation rentals. I know this is totally off the track, but it seems to me that when we were, you know, kind of going through the process of what we wanted, or, and didn't want to see in Dexter. We really wanted to avoid a situation where Dexter became attractive to people who would buy properties, maybe marginally fix them up, maybe not fix them up at all. And then it would be sort of spill over Ann Arbor. You know, places to go. And I, I thought we were resisting that, because for the most part, the neighborhoods, you know, people lived in the neighborhoods, because they wanted to live in neighborhoods. And it looks to me like it's absolutely open to that. I mean, the, the, the people, the owners have no, there's nothing to suggest they would have any stake in community life. You know, they could be managed off. Off, you know, you know, out of town. And I just want to be sure everybody agreed that, yep, that's, we think, yep, that's, we want, we want to allow that sort of type, we want that in Dexter, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to. You know, fight anybody to the death over this, but I did want to raise it.
Good point. Michelle, do you, well, because unfortunately, since I missed the last meeting, I can't really recap that as well, but. I see also, Michelle has her hand up, thank you.
Yeah. So this has been a, this has been a process that you've been going through. For, you know, nearly a year, for a year. And there's been a lot of information, and, excuse me. Michael's done the heavy lifting on all of this, and you've heard me say this before. And Michael, correct me if I misspeak here, but my recollection was, when we spoke with the city attorney. It was, his, his recommendation was not to completely prohibit vacation rentals, but make them. The special use as, as we have, and as they're recommended, where you have some, some stronger control of them. But it was not recommended to do it as a completely prohibited use.
Okay, all right.
Michael, is that, is that, I know that's pretty generic, but is that close?
Um, I, well, without getting into. This, with the specifics of any recommendation, that, that was sort of the end result of the entire process we went through with feedback from the attorney and from the planning commission. And I would agree that we probably, it would be a different thing, and perhaps a more difficult, complicated thing to try and exclude it entirely.
Okay. Okay.
Matt, Tom's got his hand up. Matt, Tom's got his hand up.
Thank you. Yes, Tom, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, yeah. And we did talk about this quite a bit, um, Karen, I love, um.
Yeah, I, I missed it.
But we basically have excluded it because we're forcing a homeowner to go through a site plan review process in order to have this use, uh, get approved. So it is pretty much excluded because, you know, who's going to go through that? Who's going to spend thousands of dollars for, for basically a Airbnb kind of, kind of license? And I, I think that, again, we're imagining, I don't, I don't know where the planning commission decides to imagine somebody's business model into the future and then imagines all these problems that we haven't had. And then says, we got to exclude something that's entirely imaginary. It seems like you, you write an ordinance around like real things, and if you have an issue in the future where the, you know, I don't know, something terrible is happening, then we can, we can look at, oh, modifying the ordinance accordingly. But we're just assigning all these imaginary things to somebody's business and saying, well, maybe we shouldn't allow them because something we don't like could happen in the future. And I don't know how you write an ordinance around something like that.
Um, all I can say is other jurisdictions have had the problem. And so that's why I'm raising it. But I, you know, I think the, it sounds like we've made it, you know, the process of, of having that sort of housing subject to so much scrutiny, it's not going to be an easy thing to do.
Right. We've, we've, we've killed it basically. So that's what you wanted to happen, that's what happened.
Challenge. Okay. Um, I see another hand up. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, include, uh, Marnie's suggested edits. And I concur with the suggestion to change it to bed and breakfast rather than bread, rather than bed and breakfast in. And, uh, this includes a recommendation to council. The, uh, short-term rentals.
Thank you. Uh, move Smith. Do we have a second? I see, oh, your hand's still up, Jim. Okay, uh, Jim Carty. So second, Jim Carty. Additional discussion?
One other thing.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, um, in the, I, I think I'm getting this right, but we, um, B and Bs are meant to look like a single-family residence. And we also are now allowing them in village commercial where you can't have the single-family residence. So I just, I, you know, I just thought, if I were thinking about this, Marnie put a B and B in, and, you know, in village commercial, I'm not sure we're, we've gotten some want to follow.
Good point, um, or good question.
Hang on just a second because I remember, hang on just a second.
Okay.
I remember looking up the future land use designations. Excuse me. Be sure that was, um, allowance, Karen, hang on one second. I'm just.
Special land use in the, in village commercial. But that, it's that structure language that I thought in the, um, you know, in the descriptions, you know, building code permits one single guest room, but only this single-family residential structure. And maybe, um, I don't know, but that's.
Oh.
Hang on just a second. In the, in the village commercial classification, under the future land use, hang on one second.
Yeah, I see.
Downtown, hold on. Okay. Single family, catch single family, um, is not something that you look for or you are, you're planning for in the village commercial. There may be existing single-family buildings that are currently used as residential. That will be in this new classification.
I also see Megan has her hand up, it looks like.
Yeah, let's have Megan talk about it.
Yeah, um, I would advise keeping, um, Airbnbs in the village commercial.
Yourself again really quickly, so those that may not, on the line, may not know you.
Right. Hi, I'm Megan Masson Minock. I'm with Carla Wortman. I'm, um, the planning consultant for the city. I would recommend, um, keeping the air, that, keeping the bed and breakfast in the village commercial because if you look in the master plan, there's houses are a building type in the village commercial. So, um, think about like the yoga house or, um, some of those houses that front, um, the park that, um, have, um, that have offices in them or, um, even, um, you know, we now, you have a house that has a restaurant. So you're using that house as something that's a different use other than sing, other than residential. So because that's part of the village commercial district and you have many, many houses that have been reused, adaptively reused to something else. And it would be appropriate for that, you know, you, you've obviously discussed this and that set of bed and breakfast would be, would be something that would also fit with the uses, um, that are envisioned for the vision, the, um, village commercial. And I know house was one of the, um, building types that was specified in the future land use in the master plan for village commercial.
Thank, thank you. Does that help? And I know we were looking.
I'm looking at it right here.
Okay, to ideally to help preserve those kind of structures in that single-family format. And this is one way to, to kind of allow that. So that's a great point, Karen. Additional questions for Megan or Karen? You have any additional comments? Any other, um, so we did have a motion made, uh, to adopt the amendments as proposed in our, uh, staff memo. Uh, any other questions, discussion? Don't see any other hands up. Was I missing anything?
A question for Jim. Was that, um, the terminology change and the revisions to the annual permit requirement or just the terminology change?
Uh, no, including the, uh, change in the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say I'm glad we got through this without Karen fighting anyone to the death. I was concerned about that.
Yay. Wow. Always turn the video off if that happened.
Always out there.
Thank you all. Okay, um, seeing no other discussion, I guess, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Robert?
Yes.
Haley?
Did I get that, Carol?
No.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Got it now. Smith?
Yes.
Schmidt?
You betcha.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yeah.
Carty?
I'm going to go you betcha too.
Okay.
Sure, that's a, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving right along. The, uh, continued discussion regarding the accessory dwelling units. Um, so take this one away, please.
Yes, okay. So you recall that at your last meeting, there were two residents that addressed you and made a pretty compelling reason for why they were looking for, um, being able to have an ADU. Excuse me. One of the things that the planning commission asked staff to do was to find out if it would be appropriate to move forward, um, to consider something like this, uh, an ordinance change at the request of a single resident. And staff did consult with the city attorney. Um, he, it basically, um, the feedback is, is it's a planning exercise. And, uh, regardless whether it's one resident asking you to consider something or a group, ultimately, just because you consider it doesn't mean you are, um, committing to amending the text to, um, to allow something or not allow it or whatever the request was. So he, he had no problem with it. So one of the things that I thought of after speaking with him was what, what is the vehicle then by which you could, um, begin to move this forward for consideration if you wanted. And that would be using the section 307, uh, review. Excuse me. So, um, you know, that's a two-step process. You determine the compatibility of, of a proposed use. You, you, um, you consider the characteristics, et cetera. Please forgive me. And if you've determined that the proposed use would be compatible within whatever given district you're looking at or districts you're looking at, um, potentially allowing that use, then you go to the next step, which is to, to determine whether it should be a principal use by right or should it have special land use or require special land use approval. If you take that affirmative action in steps one and two, then it proceeds with a text amendment. So, um, excuse me. That's the basic structure for something like this where somebody's not actually applying for it, but asking you to consider doing it going forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Uh, let me know.
Any questions, additional questions for Michelle right now? I see. I mean, I could just say, um, right, I think one time, I know we've had sometimes different members of the public reach out regarding code amendments for one purpose. And sometimes we said, you know, we're not just going to change the code for one person. But however, I, I do think this is a little different because this is something that we have, like, the reasons you laid out. That's why I feel this is worth probably looking into. I mean, if the, if this is something that you can pursue, it's an, it's an item that we've identified for at least a couple of years or longer as something that we could look into. Um, again, not necessarily saying we're going to adopt anything, but it's, I think the, the times are dictating this is a, a, a good use of our time, I think. So, um, but I know it requires additional work on behalf of staff and ultimately us as planning commissioners. But, um, I mean, and Michelle, do you, uh, are you looking, you're looking more for the kind of the general feedback from us tonight on what, whether this is something that, you know, which mechanisms we wish to go or if we're even worth considering it?
Right. Because it is something that you have put into your master plan, as I identify in my, in my memo. Is this something you want to pursue immediately? Or is this something that you want to just tackle when, as part of this whole zoning ordinance update process?
Additional, I mean, I, I, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, I think sooner or later we, we need to get to it. I mean, it's like, maybe this is as good as time as any. I, I would look again to, to staff to say, well, you know, depending on what capacity we have to take this on. I mean, if we just sooner or later, we need, and maybe this is just the, the boost we need to kind of look at it this time. So. And it seems to kind of relay into other issues we're looking at as far as short-term rentals and the zoning ordinance update. So I think it's probably pretty good timing. With that, I see two hands up, Jim, but I did see Marnie's hand go up first, Jim, Carty. So then, um, uh, Marnie, if you'd like to speak to us.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I, I honestly can't see us tackling the entire zoning ordinance in one fell swoop. So I kind of like the idea of prioritizing sections and I, I don't see why this one shouldn't be first.
Mr. Carty?
Yeah, I mean, these people came to us and they asked for help. And I think that I, it's a unique situation. I, I think that unfortunately, any government entity like the planning commission and the town can't move too fast. But, I mean, these are our residents asking us for help in a, in a tough situation. I, I think we should tackle it now because I think that's what we would all want if we came to the board and needed help with something. So I would do it now.
And I think also though, a key point to that is it is something that we've identified for quite a while. I think just, um, and that's something that we, it's been in our work program. So, um, yes. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I concur with Marnie, Jim, and you, Matt.
So any other, uh, additional feedback on that? Yays or nays?
I, I like the idea of breaking it up into these chunks like this too. And, you know, it seems like an opportune time to, to do this chunk, you know, and get it, get it covered. So. And, uh, you know, Mike did a great job on the, uh, vacation rental. So I'm excited to see how this one turns out.
Thank you. Tom, did I see your hand up?
Oh, sorry, did I miss Tom?
No, I was just, uh, no, I, I agree with everybody. Uh, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right. I think we've, I, I think we've got the direction that we need and I appreciate it. We'll have something for you. Starting, uh, with your next meeting. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to, uh, new business. Uh, item 10A, which is the, uh, general zoning code information regarding kennels and pet ownership. That's, that's interesting.
So I'm going to have Mike take this over.
Oh, Mike, okay. Back to Mike.
Yep. Um, so through code enforcement, um, staff became aware of a conflict between the, some general code language and zoning ordinance language regarding kennels. And we wanted to ask for the, uh, any feedback from the commission about some potential amendments to reconcile the two sections of code. Um, so in the general code, uh, in section 1038, it establishes that residents who own, um, four or more dogs and/or cats are required to obtain special land use approval. Um, and then there's a subsequent part of that section that requires those residents also obtain an annual or a zoning compliance permit and renew it annually. However, when you go to the zoning ordinance, uh, the definition of kennels, um, is similar. It defines kennels as any premises in which four or more dogs, cats, or other domestic animals are kept. However, it exempts residents who own pets from the definition of the kennel and, and, uh, relatedly that special land use requirement. So, um, this, we, uh, sent the, uh, these, the sections over to the city attorney for review and who recommended, an amendment to, to reconcile the conflict between the two sections. And so, uh, an option for amending the language would be to clarify that, um, a kennel is a commercially used and a special and, and that residents who own pets in the area are, is, is not a kennel. Uh, and then, um, if there's interest in, in requiring kennel operations to, um, to obtain a zoning compliance permit and annually renew that, to add that provision to the special land use section. And then lastly, if, uh, there's, uh, an interest in establishing a limit on the number of pets that a resident can own, to make it clear that that circumstance is not a kennel, um, and alternatively establishes a separate limit on the number of pets that could be owned in any, in any dwelling, which would probably be under the general code. So again, well, um, uh, staff would ask any feedback or thoughts from the commission about those potential amendments that we could then take to draft language, um, to present to you and city council, depending on where the update would be most appropriate.
Thank you. So, um, commissioner feedback? This is a good one. Uh, I see, oh, hand up, uh, Marnie?
Might as well. Um, so as someone who previously violated this ordinance by having four pets and not reporting it, um, like I can see having a limit because we don't want hoarder situations. But frankly, the ordinance isn't going to do anything about a hoarder. Um, We're not going to go into people's homes and count their pets, I don't think. So I do think there's probably some benefit to simplifying and clarifying that pets are one thing, but kennels are another. And I'm okay with four of any combination of domestic household pets.
Can I? Okay, yes. Karen, yes, please.
Okay, I'm thinking of a neighbor who does a lot of fostering of dogs. And they kind of come and go. I mean, and she's great with them from what I can tell. I don't think there are any problems in the neighborhood with them that I'm aware of. And, but the number varies. It's not, she's not always under four. And, and so I, I'm kind of, I would, I would be, I would be, I would want to make it a little higher for the making. And I agree with you on the hoarding situation, but I also think you're right that it's hard to, you know, it's hard to regulate that, particularly if it's cats and they can all stay inside. But at any rate, so I would like to see a higher number than four, just to allow for that.
Okay, I see a couple of hands up. I saw actually Allison Healy and then Jim Cardy. And then Michelle has her hand. Michelle, did you need to chime in before we hear more?
Thank you, Matt. I just wanted to follow up on Karen's. This, I don't think this has to be an either or cleanup and clarification. So, I think we could look at the fostering aspect because obviously that's something you see more nowadays than we did even 10 years ago. And so, having that as something that maybe somebody be allowed to with an annual renewal, that way, we're, we're, we're finding the flexibility and the regulations that may be needed. Not everybody's going to foster, excuse me, dogs and, and pets. But it addresses Marnie's, the issue Marnie brought up about hoarders. It helps with the zoning enforcement that may be needed, but it doesn't just pigeonhole or provide only two avenues in which to regulate pets in a home.
Great, good feedback. Okay, so I see Allison and then Jim Cardy and then Jim Smith. So Allison?
Well, I would second what Karen said. I have a neighbor who also fosters and they have two dogs of their own. Plus sometimes she fosters a pregnant dog that has, you know, anywhere from six to eight to 10 puppies at a time. So I, and honestly, I think that making people get some kind of a permit to do that when they're trying to volunteer and help with the humane society, just, that might just be too much. But the other thing that I'm wondering is why a pet is just, was, is described here as a dog, cat, bird, gerbil, hamster? Are we really going down to that level of detail? Or do we just really need to focus on maybe dogs or maybe the dogs and the cats? Because I don't really care if people have 20 fish in a fish tank.
No, it's, it's,
Worth of a frog. They can have as many frogs as they want.
It really is more targeted toward the dogs and cats, the number.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Allison, were you done? Sorry.
Yeah, I just had thought that if we eliminated the, from the definition, that it just applied to kennels as opposed to residents, that that might solve the issue. But I do understand that there's an issue, potentially an issue with hoarders, like Marnie was saying.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cardy? And then Mr. Smith?
So there, there are, there are a few things these days that stick with me from law school. But one of them is a national expert on government law saying, don't pass laws you're not going to enforce. And I, I, I just cannot see us ever enforcing this. And we haven't enforced it. And, and nobody's going out and counting gerbils. And, and I don't think that the hoarding issue is something we have to deal with. The Huron Valley Humane Society does an awesome job in identifying hoarding and acting against it. They actually have guys who look like law enforcement officers. It's sort of crazy. Animal cops almost. The, I, I would, I would suggest we chuck this. We get out of residents' lives about their pets. And we already are out. We don't enforce this. We don't go after it. I, I think we should chuck the whole thing.
So what happens though, when you've got a neighbor who suddenly has six dogs and they bark incessantly?
Well, then we should cite them for noise ordinance, not for having six dogs.
Exactly.
Yes.
Just like if they were playing their stereo at two in the morning.
Okay, then we're going to have to really do an amendment to our noise ordinance then.
Well, in all seriousness, I mean, to go back what I said, well, two things. First of all, your question shows how we should limit it. Cats don't make noise. Gerbils don't make noise. You know, so if we're really, if we've really got an issue with dogs, we should limit it to dogs. And then my next question is, do we really have an issue with dogs? Like, how many times a year does this come up? How many times every four years? Like?
We get dog barking complaints every few months, I would say, whether it, whether or not it's due to the number of dogs in the given residence, that, that part less frequently comes to our attention.
Let me ask it differently. Have we, in the memory of anyone involved in this meeting, ever gone and tried to act on our limitation on pets that is spelled out here for any reason?
I know.
No, I have not had to prior to Mike being here. I have had, I have had complaints about noise. But this is the, the one that Mike cited in his memo. This is the first time that someone has complained about the number. And because it is a complaint and a complaint in writing, we can't, that, and because there's the conflicting information.
You see, this is the problem with laws you don't enforce. Like, we haven't enforced this. We haven't needed it. But now someone in the, in the town is trying to essentially hold us accountable for it when, quite frankly, we don't really want to enforce it. If the issue is noise, we should beef up the noise ordinance and deal with it that way.
So I think, maybe, wait, I see, and Mr. Smith's been very patient. So let me, and Allison, Michelle, you still have your hands up. Do you still mean the?
Mine down. Sorry.
Okay, let's just go to Mr. Smith. And then I also see that Megan has her hand up too. But let's go to Mr. Smith first.
I can see though, where we may want to keep some type of stuff on the books to deal with the kennel aspect of it. As far as says establishing a limit of the number of animals in a dwelling, you know, animals aren't always inside the dwelling. So I think you can't specify that's in a dwelling. I think it's, you know, on the property or something like that. Allison had mentioned about, you know, a dog with puppies. On the bottom of page 21, I know under the kennel, it talks about animals that are six months or older. You know, I don't think they count the puppies at, at that point in the numbers there. So I don't know if we do have, for non-kennel situations, if you're looking at counts, I would say probably puppies fall into that category to, you know, under six months. You might briefly have more than four there. But I think that would be temporarily allowed, temporarily allowable. But I think if Jim was saying do away with most of this, I would think you would want to still establish the kennel aspect of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, Megan, and then I know Karen, you also have your hand up, but Megan's had her hand up for a bit. So.
Um, I, I just wanted to share two, two things is, one, just generally in crafting, especially in your zoning ordinance, you would want to, you want to keep in mind what your zoning compliance officer can see. So if it's inside the home and how many dogs or how many cats and things like that, and you're going to ticket somebody and take them to court, there's a difficulty about a lot of times in terms of going into people's homes and seeing what's going on. And, and also I have seen these types of rules with four cats, five dogs, especially the numbers being used by neighbors who are in a tiff with each other and reporting on each other. So I haven't ever heard of that happening in Dexter. Congratulations on your nice, in your great community. But that, you know, that, that's one thing. The other thing in terms of the kennels is a lot of our clients, most of them though, in a more, much more rural setting, have updated their kennel laws in the past five years. Their kennel ordinances specifically looking at inhumane treatment of the dogs or cats or the animals being raised there. So that's another aspect that I've seen come in. And so those are just two things one just would share.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Oh, I agree with Jim that it should be handled by noise. I think four dogs can make as much noise as six. Three, if that's really what, you know, I mean, if a dog, you've got dogs barking all the time, whether it's three of them or five of them, it's not going to change the fact that it's, you know, it's annoying, it's a problem, if it's a problem. But a noise ordinance would handle, I think, is the better place to put that problem.
Okay. So I, I think, and also, I don't know, I mean, because Michelle, we kind of started the discussion as a clarification issue and we've gone a little bit off, which, which is not a bad thing. But for your immediate, and it's probably worth exploring because I do agree generally with, well, with many others that had said, yeah, we don't, shouldn't have a law that we can't enforce or that we don't ever enforce. But, but it is on the books now and you have a question that needs to be answered. So, right, I mean, you need clarification on the code interpretation before we go down the other road, correct? Of whether we abolish it.
And one of the things, and not everybody on the commission right now is able to answer this. But it was in 2010, Mike, 2010, that we have been able to determine that the, the code and the zoning ordinance and the general code were established. So I don't know what may have happened at that time to trigger the need to regulate. Matt and Marnie and Tom, you guys were on the commission at that time. Do you have any recollection, Jim? Do you have any recollection?
I'm not sure what, I, I can't, I can't raise my hand. So sorry for butting in here. Because I think I'm on the phone, I, I can't raise my hand. But I agree with what I, I totally agree with Jim Cardy. I think that's a, that's a great point. You know, we regulate things like, or, or noise pollution is something that people call the police over. And it's not something we have to deal with in an ordinance because that's already, that's already covered. And so I, I, I agree with a lot of it. It's been said about really stripping this down to something that's really clear and simple and enforceable, like everybody's been saying. In fact, for single people, I think there should be a minimum number of cats, which is something we might take up. So I'm single right now. So that would, I have one cat. So.
Thank you. Marnie? I, I don't, Karen, you still have your hand up or is that new?
Oh, it's because I'm chewing up to, oh, put it down.
Um, there, Marnie?
I will just say, Tom, we all know you hate cats. So we're not going to require you to have more.
I hate dogs, not cats. I tolerate cats. I hate dogs. Sorry.
Okay.
Not hate, I just, dogs don't like me. This is probably getting off the topic.
It is.
They start, they started it.
My, okay. My recollection is that this came about because like what we've been talking about, a neighbor complained about a neighbor who had noisy dogs. If I remember how all this played out. And the solution was to write an ordinance to, to put some limits on this neighbor that had multiple dogs who were making noise.
Wow, I don't.
Thank you. I kind of figured that was probably what it was, but.
But I am in support of what everyone said. I, if we can get rid of the, the pet side of it, I can definitely see having some limits on kennels because kennels are a business and they're different. But even if I got a fourth animal, I'm not letting you in my house to count them.
Oh, they'll break you.
And I think, and the kennel definition again seems to cover, if we had somebody in a single family area or one of our neighborhoods that had, that was a problem with six or seven dogs out there, it seems like it would be classified as a kennel from the definition. So, right, I think I agree that, I mean, the kennel, I think we all, you know, agree that, that there is a place for that, but maybe not.
Okay.
Rest of it.
Michael, do you have enough direction?
Yeah, this, this does. Yeah. And I think this will be helpful for us to relate to council too. So as we draft this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other last thoughts for Mike? No hands up? Unless I'm missing something? Nope. Okay, moving right along. Item B under new business. The zoning ordinance update.
Oh, yep, sorry.
Sorry, Marnie.
I thought this was where we added C, but we weren't far enough yet.
No, yeah, you skipped B. C becomes four C.
In most of the events, yes.
Let me ask you this. Do you want to switch B with C since the zoning ordinance is going to take a long time to present?
Sure.
It's completely up to you. I'm just throwing it out there.
I'll move, we make this one.
Okay, second to amend the agenda. Support Roberts. Do we, so I think we'll probably need a roll call vote now for, to amend the agenda. So Carol, can we have a roll call vote, please? So just to be clear, we're moving item C before item B.
Yes. Okay. Healy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yeah.
Kowalski?
Yes.
And who was the second on that, please?
I was.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, Roberts.
So, again, we have a, a, well, brief explanation in our packet and and we had heard the presentation earlier under pre-arranged citizen participation. And I'm not sure, Michelle, do you want to kind of add anything at this point?
Yeah, hang on one second, Matt. And I apologize, folks. It was my oversight that, excuse me, the item wasn't on your agenda and that the memo that I did wasn't included in your packet. So I'm going to pull that up so that at least I can speak intelligently, hopefully. Okay. So you heard from Jessica, I'm sorry, Natalie, excuse me. And you will recall, this whole topic came up when they came in for the PUD approval because initially they wanted an all residential building. And the planning commission, both in pre-app meetings as well as in the formal hearings, excuse me, did push back because the master plan looks for more of mixed use development in the central business district. And this particular property project is in the central business district. When the development agreement and master deed and bylaws and all of that was being negotiated and worked out, the topic of how that would, how the potential conversion would be handled was, was clearly stated. There is a process in the ordinance that identifies how and when you can amend a planned unit development. Excuse me. In this particular case, it would be an amendment of the final PUD site plan as well as the PUD agreement and the condominium documents. So you can see why the, the, the developer would like to get some gauge, take your temperature, so to speak, to see if this is something you want to, can, you'd be willing to consider now? Or if you'd still like to wait a few years to see if those units could be sold for a retail commercial use. or if you'd still like to wait a few years to see if those units could be sold for a retail commercial use.
Thank you, Michelle. And I, I would just, you know, kind of mention to the commission, I don't think, obviously, we weren't under no obligation to give any kind of answer either way. How, you know, there, there is a process outlined to go through and initiate this change. I, I think we just kind of maybe look forward to, and if there's some additional information that perhaps may help us in our decision making, you know, I, I thought about this and I think most of us probably were on the commission when the project went through. And if you probably remember, it was a pretty big source of discussion that you said at first floor and those, those units there. So kind of for my part, I'll just put it out there initially that I think I, I, you know, like anything, I, I think we're always, I'm willing to consider it and review it. But, you know, I have a lot of questions that I think would, would need to be answered probably by the petitioner as far as, you know, the implications, again, these are things that are outlined in our master plan, the uses, I mean, so I would, I would look to kind of, you know, how, how does this fit in our, our master plan? How's the justification for this? Including additionally, the, I, I wanted some kind of feedback from the DDA. I think it's pretty important. You know, that is, it's kind of, I think, once these units are converted residential, it's probably unlikely if they would ever be converted back to retail. However, I know that we're in a currently a different world now, you know, than we were in a couple of years ago when this is put forth, the main project. You know, retail is struggling, but this is a decision again that we would have to, as a commission, go forward and with potentially, that would be the permanent use of this. And I, I would also ask the commission to look for implications to other uses around the downtown. Again, this isn't the DDA, just because it's off the side street a little bit. It, it's still, you know, this is relevant for all of our land uses, I think, downtown. So just kind of looking for some justification on this and some homework to say whether or not, you know, how the conditions changed. I mean, we get that in general, but again, we have to look at the long term here and how this affects all of our master plans. So those are just kind of my initial thoughts, but I really want to hear other commissioner. Yes, Mr. Carty?
Yeah, I was obviously here for the previous discussion. I obviously remember the previous discussion. I, I think it's best to talk about these things as frankly as we can. You know, this has been a very successful project from the developer's perspective. You know, we, we've had only 14 sales in Dexter this year, over $488,000. And 10 of them have been in this project. This project is selling a lot of very high value condos and seemingly successfully. We've only had two sales over 700 grand in the city this year. They've both been in that project. If I were a developer, I would want to sell those first floor units because they are making a lot of money on this project. It's a project that's in demand. And I say congratulations to them about that. There's absolutely no negative to that. It's good for the city. It's been a really great project. But I think, I've said this before about many other things, our goal here is always to be planning for the city for the next five, 10, 20, 25 years. And I think that that is a really great spot for a mixed use development. And I think it, it, we are in a temporary moment here that is terrible. And, and I have a lot of sympathy for anyone trying to lease commercial real estate right now. But we, you know, we made the rules clear going in. We have a master plan. We made this project the way it is because we have a master plan and where it is, and I would be very opposed to rezoning those units to residential.
Jim? Additional?
Matt, Tom has, had his hand up.
I'm sorry, I keep missing Tom's. Okay. All right, Tom, yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I tried everything. I, for something just out of my screen. I, I just, I, I just vividly remember for some reason that we granted them the flexibility to do this in our approval. Yeah, and maybe it's me, but we had this discussion and the applicant had this concern at the beginning. And we talked extensively about the fact that, you know, our zoning extends over there and we would prefer that it be commercial, but we all know that just because we zone something doesn't mean that, that, that a market is going to follow our zoning. The people don't walk around the community with a map, zoning map and say, oh, well, there's a store over here. And there, there are probably, you know, types of businesses that would do fine over in that location that are not, they're not walk-in businesses necessarily, like an insurance company or professional office or something like that. But I, I recall this, I don't know what happened, Michelle, maybe I'm, I'm misremembering it, but I, I seem to remember that, that that was actually in their approval, that they, if they felt that they could not, and it was up to them, that if they felt they could not lease these for retail, that they could convert those to residential.
They could come back and, and make the request through the PUD amendment process.
But they could always do that. That didn't, something like that wouldn't have needed to be in the approval.
That, that's
Right.
way the planning commission had done it.
I remember, Tom, you're right. We did have a big discussion. You are correct.
Okay, so while I, I, I totally agree with Jim Carty on the last one, this one, I, 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 I would think that, you know, we want to, we want a healthy community and we want successful projects. And I think using the ordinance as a barrier to success is not, not a good way to do it, but whatever.
Additional feedback?
Mike, I guess I have a question.
Roberts?
Does this, or what, does this set some sort of precedent? If we did that, if we said, okay, this project. I mean, we're not spot zoning, right? Because, right, we're not rezoning it to residential. So now we have
Not like Avalon, right?
Right.
Well, now, now we have this, you know, we've done this, we've said, okay, you, you, we can, you don't have to have retail on the first floor, like retail commercial, like, you know, the central business district requires. And, but this building is an exception. I, am I, is that right?
Well, I, I don't think, and I'll ask Michelle also to, I, I don't think it necessarily sets it. I mean, I think it's, it's some ways that, yeah, I think other, other people can use. If, again, in the future, we, we're looking for additional development around this area, but it's the same area, it's the same downtown as, again, along Main Street. So, yeah, somebody could, I think. But that's why I was just looking for additional justification to really have them prove the case in here. Why is this location so unique so that we don't have to, again, so somebody comes back on Main Street and now says they want to convert both the red brick frontages to just single family residential. Well, you did it around the corner. But that's why I was looking for additional, more than just getting our feeling here tonight. I mean, I can't make any kind of decision based on just a simple request, but I, I, I think that they have to really prove that case to make, make a change. Because that's the direction, again, whether or not we agree necessarily with the original decision. And I know, Tom, I respect that opinion as well, but I think that's, if that's where we're at right now, we need to make a decision based on that going forward. And I know I see, Mr. Carty has his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, from a legal perspective, you generally don't set a, you know, binding precedent as long as you're going through your normal procedures and you have a rational basis for what you do. But I will say it really does set a precedent that, from a perception standpoint, can be hard to defend. I'll give an example. There was a municipality in Oakland County that had a fairly strong ordinance against digital billboards. And then they made one exception for one company because they thought it had an additional benefit to the town because the company came in and sold them on the idea that we will give you X access to the board, so it'll be good for the town. You can put your announcements up there, blah, 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 blah. And so they did what they viewed was a one-time exception for a specific reason. But then another billboard company came in and said, we want the same thing. And they said, well, we're not going to give it to you. We don't need access on two billboards. And they said, well, we're going to sue you then because you've made a special exception for one person and you have to give it to us. And, you know, that's an open legal question, whether they would have won or not. But the fact of the matter is, there is a possibility, and just defending something like that is very expensive. And, and I'm not saying we should fear that exact outcome. I'm just saying it shows, when you open the door a little bit for, for some, for one individual project, for reasons that are highly discretionary, everything then looks like, you know, there can be an exception for everyone. I mean, here we have a really strong master plan for mixed use development down there. We stuck to it when we approved this project. If, if, if we were to just reverse it now after the building is only been in sales for, you know, I don't know if it's been a year that, that people have been able to move in. That would look very arbitrary and capricious to me. And certainly not in keeping with our master plan.
Thank you, Jim.
Jessica Checolini has a hand up. One.
I guess we could here, I mean, to, or in, discuss, I, I hesitate now because I, I mean, we've got something that was before us, a request. We have a formal process for this. I, I don't want to necessarily give the petitioner all this. I mean, we're doing a lot of work here without them actually applying. This was a petition. I mean, it was just a comment during pre-arranged citizen participation. There's a process for this. You know, again, I think we're giving more than enough feedback, so I do appreciate the petitioner's hand up. But I think unless the commission feels that we should bring in the petitioner at this time, I'd, I'd say I'd like to kind of stick to commission discussion, I think. And if there's a petition filed, we bring them in to state their case.
Okay.
But again, I'm, I'm open for ideas from the commissioner. I don't, I don't want to be too hard, hard line here, but there's a process. We're giving a lot of information here for just a pre-arranged citizen participation request. So ideally, this would be followed by a formal request. But Kyle, yes, you had your hand up?
Uh, no, I think you, I think you've summed it up well. So I suppose we wait for the actual application.
Okay, thank, and, and again, I don't mean to be hardline, but I think we've given pretty good feedback at this time for, I mean, there's a process and we can go through it. But I am, if there's additional comments, any other planning commissioner ideas, feedback?
I'm at the end of the meeting for citizens wishing
That's true. Yes, that's true. petitioner can also chime in at the end. That's correct. Thank you, Jim. Okay, seeing no other discussion, I guess at this time, we can move on to item B. Right, yes. My amendment, yes. So we can move on to item B, which is the zoning ordinance discussion. So I believe we're going to have a presentation by Megan on this one.
You are.
Probably a share screen.
And everybody did get the updated diagnostic review as well as Megan's PowerPoint. They are both on the website.
No, I didn't.
This is going to ramble on.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If they weren't back, and I didn't get any separate.
Right, it, I just discovered it today, so it's online currently. But Megan is going to go through everything in the PowerPoint, Jim, and I will make sure you get physical copies tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, are you able to share your screen?
Um, I think, I know that Michelle had the PowerPoint, but I can get it up and then share, see if.
That's what's in my packet, right?
No, I, Mike, I can't share my screen at this point. It's disabled.
But I can't share my screen, Mike, because I probably can.
You could, I can also.
It says that host disabled participant screening.
Megan, how about that? Or are you able to, I made you a co-host, so you may be able to share now.
Okay, hold on. Getting it up.
Mike, you might have to on-share yours.
Yes. All right.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, Mike, yeah, do you mind giving me a nod if you see the, if you see it in the slideshow view, not the presenter view?
I see it in presentation.
Okay, great. So we're here because of, we're kicking off the zoning ordinance. And we went through a diagnostic review. We went to review that with you. Just to remind you, for the next 12 months, what we're trying to do is to take what was in the master plan and convert it into rules and regulations that are in the zoning ordinance and then also in the subdivision ordinance. So these are the articles. This is a process that you've been going through for over, for, over five years now. So 2015 to 2017, a number of articles were completed and amended. Then also at that time, you had some articles to be revised that were listed, you know, that were listed and say these things should be added. And then also there are other articles to be developed in this update as well. Any questions from anybody on what was done previously? And then the scope of work for looking at what articles to revise here? And I'm always going to take silence as agreement. And I don't have my participants tab open, so, Mike, I can see you. So if somebody has their hand raised, can you just nod at me?
Her.
And you're not Well, with the presentation, so please let us know.
Okay. And your notes are visible, Megan, and I'm not sure if that's true.
Well, I don't think there are many notes, but.
Well, we can also see the slides, so.
Okay. We're, we're just going to go with it because who knows what will happen if we
Notes about planning commissioners or anything, right?
No, no, no. So the process is ordinance assessments. Then we go into development and draft regulations. We'll be working with a subcommittee, as we had before, of the planning commission. I believe that also when we spoke to you last, your desire to do that was at, before every planning commission meeting. But I think the last time we talked about this was pre-pandemic. And so how we do that may have changed, so we'd welcome discussion about that at the end. Or maybe also it might be more appropriate to do that next month. After drafting those, having a folder after ready for review, reformatting the zoning ordinance so that it's in Adobe form with hyperlinks. It's easy to navigate online and then also then going through the adoption process. Any questions from anybody on process? Thanks. So what I wanted to do tonight was to go through the ordinance assessments and you received a report from us on the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And what we'd like, and these are basically going through it and going through each one and saying, what needs to be updated per state and federal law, case law? What changes have we discussed in the master plan or in your previous, in your previous rounds? And what improvements are, are needed or are possible at this point in time? Especially with things where technology has moved, such as exterior lighting. But also in cases for things that were in the master plan in terms of form-based code, alternative energy, things like that. And so we looked at the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. What I have is a slide on each article. And going through each one, so I'd like to do is kind of hit the highlights of each one, then pause and hear from you all if there are any questions or contributions for, from you as a group. We'll note those down. I don't think we resolve a lot of them tonight. But then also what we can do is take those and put those into the process for when we go through each, each article or, or division as the chapters are called in the subdivision ordinance. So leaping right in, the first one is article two, which is definitions. The sign definitions need to be updated based on a US Supreme Court case of Reed versus Sullivan. Also, there was a recent Michigan Supreme Court case that affects that as well. And so, and it really does affect sign definitions and your sign article because you cannot regulate anymore on the, based on the content of the sign is. So if you have to read the sign to figure out what type of sign it is, that's not a definition you can use anymore. So like political signs, for sale signs, real estate signs, things like that are often in codes, including yours, and those need to be updated. Also, we were told by staff that definition of family needs to be updated. Graphics are really needed in your definitions, and so we can update those and, and bring in some more. Looking also, since we're going to inject some form-based codes into different articles to make sure that those all have the proper definitions. And I also wanted to note that we would review this at the end of the process because then we just, it's kind of like the final stitching on a zoning ordinance to make sure that you have all the proper definitions there. Everything that divine is actually used in the ordinance and what. Everything that divine is actually used in the ordinance and whatnot. So this is one article that you always kind of have two swipes at as you go through the process. Oh, and also on these slides, you'll see that this little page one, that's the page one of the report that, and it was the one that Michelle sent out today. So does anybody have any questions on or contributions for article two?
Is it all right if we just email you kind of anything we got?
Absolutely, absolutely. That might be easier.
I think that's probably a good idea because also, I mean, there's a lot of information, you're, which is great. No, so yeah, maybe if we kind of follow up with some questions, because I think, I mean, we want to pay attention good during this and then not to stretch it out too long, but.
Right, right.
But again, having said that, if any commissioners have a question, if it's something quick that can be answered, but let's make a note and, and it'd be great to go through the revisions in maybe the next meeting yourself. Thank you.
Absolutely. So article three is general provisions, and this is always a big chapter. This is things that apply to everything in the city. And so you can see that there's a lot here. Accessory structures, especially those, your accessory structure regulations are really built for your residential areas, but not your non-residential. So we've, along with staff, recommended adding some of those and differentiating them because they have different needs. And then also looking at ADUs, which in terms of your discussion tonight, I, you know, we really welcome you moving those forward and then we can incorporate those in. And also work with Mike's expertise and learn some lessons from him and Michelle in terms of how to work with you all to get zoning ordinance work done efficiently and well. There are temporary uses and structures, and you'll notice that in the, in the memo, that's a big block. And basically, those are cleanup and clarification. So things where, especially in talking to your staff the summer, you know, they issued a lot of temporary use permits. And to clarify, what's the process, who know, who has power to do what, when, things like that. And that would be obviously some discussion with you along the way. Moving clear vision areas to access management. And so this is kind of a recommendation throughout to make things clearer and also put together in, in sections that make sense with each other instead of spread out amongst. And, and, and it's really typical within ordinance like yours, that's been, I guess for lack of a better word, well amended, that often things are in different spots. And so this is an opportunity to take them all and put them in one. Sidewalks update and cross-reference. Reception intent that to update those based on federal and state laws. You kind of have waste receptacle regulations in different places, and we wanted to put them all in one place. We were told by staff that it would really be great to have some clarity on what happens with the fence on a corner. But also again, to know, you know, should those fancy regulations be different for commercial or mixed use rather than residential? Because again, the regulations are built for residential, which is fine. But it would help to have some differentiation. Rec vehicle parking is just a simply a question of how long. That's something that's always in ordinance, it's kind of like the kennels and the dogs and the cats that you talked about earlier. These are like little regulations that come up, but when they come up, it's an issue. Lighting, we have some great best practices, especially with the LED lights are different in terms of lumens and how they work than most lighting regulations are built for. So we can bring those up to date with the most up-to-date technology. Wireless communications, those regulations are always changing. And the work, the parking regs, we're going to move those to the parking article. Again, can understand why they're here, but let's get them all in one place. And also, based on the discussions from the master plan, saying that maybe there should be a new section in here dealing with alternative energy. So if somebody wanted to put a solar panel on, accessory solar panel, wind, you know, just a variety of things, charging stations, you know, where do those go? How are they regulated, you know? Et cetera. And so does anybody have any questions? Or things, especially in this is a general catchall that you said, well, no, I think we really need this. Or I've wondered why we don't have regulations on this, can you explore that here?
A quick question.
Sure.
This all looks great. So I guess it's kind of the lighting thing brings it up. And then there was some discussion when they finished Central Street about the light levels along the street. You know, some of the neighbors thought maybe it was too much. And I, and we, we brought up the idea of like tying the street lighting design to the zoning district. So all of these seem to go towards the property itself. But you know, is there any cause in this plan to, you know, have some kind of guidelines which would almost go towards engineering? To see that would help, help mitigate that whole thing, you know, get into like the, almost like the civic design part of it.
That probably is more appropriate for, you're going to have more opportunity to do that in the subdivision control ordinance. In the subdivision ordinance, which is the second part where for new subdivisions or new neighborhoods, you can lay out very specifically what the design would be. In terms of retrofitting existing streets, like the project in Central, that's more of your city engineering and having, being part of that design at that point. And so, you know, I'm sure Michelle and Mike have been in communication with the engineers and then whoever's, and Courtney as well, and whoever your new city manager, those would probably be standards to amend those, but those would be beyond the scope.
So that's, that's not part of this, at least it's not part of zoning. It may be something that we say something about, but it's not this.
Only if there's a new neighborhood built. Then you could have regulations that are about that.
Got that, cool, thank you, perfect.
Okay. All right. So, um, talking about things that are always a little controversial, parking and loading or unloading. General theme in here is to eliminate the redundancies. Also to make it more readable with the addition of tables. And also maybe some reordering of sections or consolidation of sections. Looking at the numerical requirements, are those numbers right? And also what's the maximum? There's been, you know, a suggestion to consider 1.2 time, 1.25 times the minimum. Some communities have moved to maximums only. These are all things that we can discuss when we get to that. And then I would expect to have a robust conversation with the subcommittee about that. Also really looking at village commercial and village, village residential parking. What do you want out of that? You know, do you want to have all of the, you know, do you always have required the minimums? Is it some percentage? How do you deal with on-street parking? How do you deal with in lieu? Things like that. You're very free, just, we need to update it and some more graphics would help. From access management, again, you kind of have some access management scattered all over. We want to consolidate it all here. And maybe if there are possibilities, maybe to look at some mapping where curb cuts could be or, or on what blocks and things like that. So there's some different options there. Also wanted to have, thought that you would appreciate a new section on standards for ride-sharing services, autonomous vehicles, some electric charging. And then also kind of along with that is to, you could also, if you wanted to at points in time, have decreases in your minimums as a swap. So I've seen it where if you have electric charging stations, you know, for every electric charging station will decrease your minimum by half space and things like that. So there are incentives there that we can work in. So those are things to look at, we would like to look at, or identified as things that we need to look at in parking and, and loading. Did anybody have any questions, suggestions? I know this is something that you deal with all the time and, and people have opinions.
Well, I mean, we have opinions, but I'll save it for when we get a little bit more details.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, landscaping. Again, this is another one where there, you know, this was over two pages of identify, identify changes. But a lot of those are about the order in which things are done, graphics and just updating or consolidating. Because I know especially for, for me, when I came to your zoning ordinance as a newbie, the landscaping was the hardest to navigate and to find, really know all the regulations and where they are. Where a lot of things are kind of buried in there. So I think we can just with some better titles, a little, a few more sections, we can help, we can help that make, make it more readable. And also some more graphics. For existing sites, we were asking the question of, you know, right now for the percentage for full compliance with standards, I believe is 10%. Could that be increased to 30%? So it, you know, you, if you're increasing the building by 10% or the parking by 10%, you have to fully comply with the landscaping. But you know, for some of your smaller sites, that may be a lot to ask for that. So where's kind of, where's the best, where's the best place for Dexter? Looking at in, you know, looking at primarily infill development for, for that? And where do you want it to be brought up and to what level? So that's a discussion we would look forward to having with you. In terms of parking lot screening, looking to things to, and in general to make it a more urban ordinance, to take a lot of some of the suburban and edge off. And so you have a shrubs or decorative first fences first and maybe eliminate all berms or that's, you know, a last case scenario. Something that's been always wonky and also tagging my colleagues at Carla Whitman is the recommended plant material lists and how they're really kind of more act as required lists. And so to be honest in what our titles are, but also to maybe have some areas where deviations are allowed. And do those deviations all need to go to the planning commission? Or could those be administrative or through landscape, park attacks, something like that? Also because of your, the, the great discussions we had during the master plan about preservation of natural resources and trees, felt like your tree preservation and your placement standards. In those, those can be strengthened and be easier to use. And but also there might be some things like, instead of the planning commission having to wave cutting down, you know, a willow tree or something like that, maybe that's just part of the ordinance and part of a rule. So we'd like to have those discussions with you about how to incentivize preservation of high-quality trees. And but maybe make the process a little smoother. Any questions, contributions?
We have some really good points on this one.
Well, thanks.
And I think just for, for commission too, I mean, we're going to go through these each, because I mean, we're going through a lot of information now. So I know that we all have, like, we have questions and comments, but I think, again, we'll, we'll be going through these, this is our only chance, of course. We're going to be having lots of discussion on each one of these sections. So this is kind of an overview, but I just want to make sure that we're, I don't want to feel like I'm rushing commission or we're rushing commission through these kind of proposals. Well, we'll all revisit this, it's kind of the overview look.
And really what would be helpful to me is to hear from you what I missed. And so maybe I should have, maybe that should have been the question instead of contributions and questions is what did I miss? So moving on to article seven, signs. As I said earlier, this needs to be updated based on that US Supreme Court case and the latest Michigan Supreme Court case. Also felt like illustrations would be, you know, would really help. Again, those sign types, they can't be defined by, they can only be defined by the size and, size and location, not the, not the content. And just to let you know, really the tough thing here and where, where I'm sure we'll again have a very robust discussion is about temporary signs. And those are particularly tough, especially with political speech and political signs, keeping, having to treat those the same as you would a yard sale sign maybe. And so expect us to talk about duration quite a bit. Also ground signs and building signs like the how and the where. And sometimes the how can relate to the size and the speed of the road or how far the building is set back from the road rather than the zoning district. So when we get to this point, we'll give you a few different options in the subcommittee, and that may be a point in time also where we come back to the planning commission as a whole and get some more direction. Also, there's appeals and that is right now in the sign article. Just to be cleaner, we would rather that move to the BZA article. And then also staff brought off that often signs are in the right of way. And how do we deal with that or how do we permit it or I'll open that policy door? So anything I missed on signs? Okay.
Are we going to have neon billboards on top of the buildings downtown?
I think we can talk about that at that time.
Yeah.
Or something, yeah.
Yeah, so, and actually, so I, I suspect that was a joke. But it does bring up, sometimes there, we had communities who have asked us to have regulations about just unnecessary light. Often it's in gas station windows, they're like these channelized lights or blinking lights. We have some regulations about things like that. So those might be some things that actually do come up, and if you're interested in those, we can bring those to the table.
That's actually a great point. The other one they do are those like full wrap, like it's not even a window anymore, it's just a billboard.
Yeah.
Right.
It's like, wait, where'd all the glass go?
Yeah, window signs, so we can talk about those.
Or at least make them, put them in their renderings when they bring them to planning. You know, so we can see.
Megan, window signage is something that has to be addressed. And I probably neglected or forgot to mention it when we talked. Currently, right now, the only thing that window signage or the way it's identified, it, it talks about it being temporary and being 30% of the, of the window. It's kind of ambiguous otherwise, so.
Okay. So we'll get your best practices for those. And then again, those are, they're tricky on enforceability too, because a lot of times you're sending your, sending compliance officer out and doing a lot of like days of counting. Still there? Or measuring percentages and things like that. Anything else on signs? I knew that was the one where what, somebody would actually say something.
Well, I guess I have one comment about that window. I don't, if we have problems that we need to address, again, I, I think one concern I have with this planning mission of this generation, the planning commission is we seem to like to regulate everything we can think of. And whether it's an issue or not, and I guess I would, I would urge consideration to solving problems we have, not that, not make up crises that need to be fixed that we haven't experienced. And, and I think window signs is one where I, I guess I haven't seen any, you know, Las Vegas style storefronts along Main Street that need to be addressed. And so again, I don't know that squashing our, our retail anymore with more regulations is necessarily a, a good idea.
Tom, we just moved to deregulate dogs.
Baby steps, right?
And just a point of clarification, Tom, the, 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 my bringing that up didn't have anything to do with any problems. It's making sure that we address and provide a regulation for window signs. At this point, we're kind of flying blind, except if somebody requests temporary window signage.
So. And I think I would go to Jim's point where we, 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 we don't pass ordinances that we're not, we, we're not going to enforce, we don't have a purpose for. Sorry, Jim.
Okay, and Marnie has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't notice that, but I don't.
Thank you, Megan. I will just say, as a former business owner who had a lot of trouble with the sign ordinances, this requires a lot of cleanup and I think it should involve a lot of cutting and deregulation. I think as it stands, it's way too restrictive and it's not applied uniformly.
Yeah, I think it, I don't think we necessarily go down that rabbit hole now, but yeah, I think it's suffice to say there's a lot of discussion about signs. Yeah, I mean, that's going to probably take up a whole meeting worth of.
Oh, yeah.
To get sign regulation passed, it actually is not passed, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of discussions. Yeah, it's a lot of discussions. So I think we can tape, but everybody's got great points, I'm sure on this. So yeah, prepare for that discussion, Megan.
I will, I will. I'll drink a lot of coffee.
Can we get pizza that night?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did I hear pizza? Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a good pizza and soda night.
That's true. Okay. So all right, let's bring it back to focus.
People tend to agree when they're eaten.
All right.
To get that.
So special land uses. You know, one of the things that you is number one to update to match the special land uses that are in the use article, in the use district articles. But also, also you have a, this granted list in Article 8 with all your special, special land use specific requirements. But you don't have one for every one. And, you know, it, it, it seems like it's just ripe for confusion or for someone to say, well, you're doing this to them, but you're not doing this to the, to this use. Most of the zoning ordinances that we've done lately, we have a whole separate article that's just specific use requirements, whether it's a special land use or not. And that's in its own article. And it, some of that might be a regular, that's a principal use. And it might be a principal use in one district, but it also might be a special use in another. But they still see, need those specific regulations. And like a kennel or a vet, or a vet clinic is, you know, is an example, or there might be something like that. So we would say to take out that, that section and make your own article, make the own, a separate article just on specific requirements for uses. And then that also makes it much easier for somebody who's a user, who's a developer or a citizen to go find their use and then see where all the regulations are, rather than trying to dig through. If you're, if you're not really attuned to zoning, you may not find it buried in the special induced article.
And Megan, to that point, I think over, right, my time on the planning commission, I think we used a special land uses. New kind of uses came up that we didn't ever, like ADUs, marijuana, things like that, that we never had any. We tended to group them under like special, because it's like, well, we don't really want that everywhere. So I think you're right. It was done kind of piecemeal and added to with different standards. So I believe that's a section that really needs to get looked at because we've added, well, I guess like a lot of our ordinance, piecemeal here and there. So consistency is not always there with different standards. So it is.
Okay. Well, we can bring that up to date. So also then you go to the Article 9, the zoning districts in the map. Obviously, you know, we've talked a lot in the master plan about form-based code. So there's, we're proposing some additions to additional districts. And so that would obviously change the map. But then also we had talked about another thing that you could consider and that, again, with a lot of our clients we work to have is to have a table of uses in this article that lists all the uses in all the districts. And then in a table, and then also then there's a section with notes, which then you can cross-reference anything that specifically links. And so rather than having them in each section, rather than each use article, because what happens in the use articles is that you may amend it later, but you might use some different language that's in two or three of them. And this is how the zoning ordinance over time gets messy and inconsistent. So we feel like sometimes it's a best practice to put that, the table of uses all together. And this is a natural place to put it. So we would, that's, that's a strong suggestion. And then also you will need to do this, the zoning of annexed areas right now is different than what you've said in the master plan. So we want to bring that up to date with the process that you agree with, with city council in the master plan. Anything I missed here or any reactions to that table of uses?
Were you adding graphics to this district?
Typically not. The map is associated with it. But usually what it is, is just a listing of the districts. It might have the intense of the districts as well. But there's not a lot of graphics there, probably more in the scheduled regulations when we're talking about, you know, setbacks and things like that. And in form-based districts, definitely we could have illustrations there which give a clearer picture of, you know, where the building should sit and what should be happening.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Diving into use districts. So, and, and, and we're, we're more than halfway through. We just wanted to use consistent terms between them. Because again, as I indicated, sometimes they, there's slightly different terms. Update the density uses and building types for the master plan. Update any residential uses for the housing task force. I'm not sure where that process is and whether they have final recommendations or whatnot. But we'd want to incorporate those in. And then evaluate the special land uses and regulations in each district. So this is an opportunity to look at those and say, okay, like, does everything still hold? And I'm going to, there's a couple that we flagged in, in articles in, that I'll go over in the next few minutes. But those are kind of a general approach that we took. So one family district, number one, our recommendation is remove farms. You don't have any, even an urban farm. I think we can deal with that when that comes or a community garden. That wanted to, but you have a, you have something specific on the acreage, which violates some case law. So it's just cleaner to take it out. And then also update the density per the master plan. And so, and this would become more of like a suburban residential district for, for those areas that, that match that. Then we go to village residential and really again, update the density, the uses, the building types for the master plan. But also here, one use we flagged that you might want to eliminate is the temporary employment housing. That was based on a house that the theater, Encore Theater owned. Just, we're, you know, want to pose the question, we guess that, does that still, do we still, do you still want that there? Since it came from a, for a very specific thing. To have a new form-based article, you know, village residential district two, and draft that with the density uses and building types for the master plan in the areas that we were mapped for that in the master plan. For general business, now this might be a little controversial. And so is everybody, if there's, if anybody's a hard no right now, let me know. And we're going to discuss it more. But this general business article, this, so this is what our initial reaction is to eliminate this. And to say all those C1 properties, which are all located on the corridors in Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor, Dexter, or Baker, go them into mixed use. If there's some other ones that are like the, I think, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I think around the cider mill, there's a general commercial. Rather change that to a village commercial and make sure that that fits with what it is. And there would be one non-conformity and that would be the Citywell property. Because when we look at your kind of overall structure and what this, what, and what this article is intended to do, it's intended to be a very suburban style commercial district. And in the master plan, that's not what you kind of said throughout, it's either a mixed use. Or there might be a few areas where this would happen. But if we looked at it, those are all on the edges of the village. So I think we can take these and incorporate them while with the proper regulations. But that's a big change. And so wanted to float that out there. And again, if there's anyone who says a hard no or don't like it, I would want to know now.
I think, Megan, I think I'd be supportive of that overall, but I think one of the, the key, and you said it, and I know you know, but it's a, that's a pretty big change. And I think we put education out there, or again, you don't want it to be misconstrued. And like, if that's something that can be, they're changing this form base and you can build whatever you want. So that's definitely one of those items that I think we, we need a lot of, not just discussion even among the commission, but making sure the general public understands where we're going with that one too. Misconstrued.
Nice point.
Yeah.
And I think there's a good case to be made. And I think if we're given enough graphics and, you know, education, it seems like it, it could be an interesting idea.
Exactly. And I think that's where all of our master plan tended to point us in that direction. But I, right, it's just one thing. And I think, again, the general public would probably be, because they like the downtown, more or less, how it is. And that's what we're looking to maintain, that kind of character. But it may be able to be misconstrued. You know, these things sometimes can go sideways. Maybe I'm reflecting my other work duties in this one. But I would just hate to see that happen here because before we get out that education, it's, it's a big change. But I think it's typically the direction that I think the community wants to go.
Okay, I've heard a female voice trying to get in here. Okay, Michelle?
Well, the one question I've got, I don't have a problem with the elimination of C1. But some of our older PUDs, Dexter Crossing.
That's their underlying zoning?
Yes, they, they specifically cite, for their area plan, the different zoning districts. And in their, in their development agreement, it's called C1. So as long as we can find a way to still address that.
Link it.
Yeah. Yeah. Also, just to point out in the work program, and again, this was all done pre-COVID. We had hosting a zoning education workshop for the public. And so we could do some of the education for that. And that was the end of this ordinance, ordinance assessments stage. We've done a couple of virtual ones as a firm. And so now have a little more, we have better Zoom chops in terms of doing those things. So we could do a webinar or, or something like that. But we just need to talk more about how we want to do that going forward. But great points about education. Great. Also along that, then also for the professional business, we would look to eliminate that and then fold those into the mixed use districts. And so I expect in the same way that you would want to have some education on that and how it works. And there's not that much of the zoning properties that zone for PB anyway. For village commercial, update the intent, reevaluate the uses. And also a question here is, should this be form-based? And I think that's when something we'll have to discuss as we go forward. Because it's on the edges, there, there might be some things that it would be good to do. And there might be some things that, you know, maybe that would just be a little too much.
We don't want to focus on downtown first before we start.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're definitely adjacent to each other though, too. So, you know, it's, you go from a very like traditional form to basically whatever you want, like immediately. So, you know, what, how do we manage maybe that transition somewhat? Good, nice, very smart.
The other thing is then looking at the central business district for that to be form-based. But also to talk about as part of that is, you know, where the, where that CBD area is, because what zoned? And what it's planned for, where it's planned is a little bigger. And do you want to take the opportunity at this point to expand that? Or do you want to rezone as, as applications come? And on some properties, you may say yes. And on some properties, you may say no. We just figure that that's probably, that because the area is bigger and the master plan than zoning ordinance, we feel like it's time to discuss that and bring that up. Karen?
Um, I just, I'm stuck, I'm stuck on the professional business district.
Yeah.
What, what can, what's, can you give me an example? Is it what's at the top of kind of the crest of the hill on Dexter and Arbor?
Is that? Right, where the, where the medical offices are and.
Okay, all right. That makes sense. Okay, thanks.
No problem. And also one thing to know in the form-based code, as lots get smaller, those, the uses that are allowed in those smaller lots can, can go down. So not only, so a lot of ways that you've been able to, in a pure use-based code, to control what's going right up to sensitive areas has been that you can only do it by use. And so that often has a lot of different zoning districts. Whereas if you have a mixed use form-based code and the lots get smaller and smaller and smaller, like if you, as you're going down into town, as you crest over the hill and then you're going down to town, those things, those on Ann Arbor Dexter Road, the lots get shallower and shallower and smaller and smaller. So some of those smaller, shallower lots are not appropriate for big retail, correct? So what in the, in the zoning ordinance, what it'll say is these are type A lots. And these are only allowed for these building types and these uses in this district. So while everything, while something might be zoned Dexter and Arbor corridor, the lot size may, will dictate the menu of uses and the menu of building types. So a ton acre lot that's zoned in Ann Arbor Dexter corridor is not going to have the same menu of uses and the same menu of building types as a half acre one.
Makes sense. Cool. Well, that's going to be neat to see.
Yeah. But, but it's also something that we'll all need to do education on because if your house is right next door to it and it's always been office, and then if you look at this menu of uses and you think bushes can be in your backyard and it won't fit, then, you know, we just need to tell, to have people really understand how it works. And it's more of a three-step process rather than a one-step process. Does that make sense to everybody? All right. So I talked a lot about Dexter and Arbor Road. And basically it would be form-based, we would eliminate the overlay. So instead of two sets of regulations that are all in one, and then update the density uses and building types per the master plan. And again, the master plan is a guide. We may find as we go through this that we don't need that. Or we may see as we go through this that the list, the menu of uses or needs to get smaller or bigger, or the building types need to get smaller or bigger. Because again, keep in mind the master plan is a guide. Heritage overlay. So this is the areas around the park. Oh, going back, yes.
Um, that's okay. Go ahead. Perfect.
Okay. Heritage overlay. So these are areas around the park and that really attempt is to preserve those historic buildings. We would say to do that either in the zoning, and again, if these were village commercial, or if this is where the CBD expanded, you could say the only building types that are allowed on here, if it was a form-based, are houses. And these are the menu of uses that are allowed in them. There's single family, family residential office, some sort of service, things like that. But what we've heard from the staff is that this has been difficult to implement. People don't get it. Like developers don't get it. They look at this, you know, like, I don't know what to do with this. And so we feel like you could eliminate that overlay and then really work on what the regulations are for those areas and make sure that they're appropriate. But again, we're going to need to dig into more of this and what it is and really talk about what your intent is there. And then also be able to effectively educate and communicate. Any questions? And again, you can always email me and, or Michelle or Mike and let us know thoughts. Baker Road, again, same thing kind of as Dexter and Arbor, but how, how you approach that? And then that will not necessarily, we're going to, we're saying that we're going to do the same things, but those regulations are going to look different because they're different roads. And in the master plan, you had different density uses and building types. Any questions on Baker Road? Industrial, limited industrial, really not a lot of changes here. Just what we'd like to do is to have a conversation about what goes here, what goes in R and D? How are these two districts different? What do they look like? And some of that may be based on where they are. Any questions on limited industrial?
Is this just the industrial part?
No, these are the little areas like. No, these are the little areas like.
Like the one that came up for like zoning review recently?
Yeah, yeah. Research and development is the is the industrial park. And really here, again, talking about what uses, how this differentiates between the I1. And then you have this really interesting thing, I had never seen forbidden uses in a zoning ordinance before.
Yeah, Megan, I can address that. Okay, so this was a plat. And as a plat, it had covenants and restrictions. And I think, and since this was done back in the late 80s, this got incorporated into the zoning ordinance so that people would know there are certain uses that can't go in here at all.
Okay.
I I think we could, pardon me, probably deal with this in the purpose and intent section. So that there's that reference that we keep in mind after all of us are long gone.
Right, so it was just, we're charged with doing a technical and diagnostic review. And well, it was, it was a new technical thing that I'd never seen. So thank you for the story. And then I think I, you know, I would agree with that, it's a great way to to maybe communicate the past while not creating something that might not be enforceable.
Right, the other thing is when business parks were certified, that program no longer exists, so.
Okay. Public park, just wanted to again, update the intent to match the master plan to make sure it reflects that urban rather than a suburban type approach. Really, when we get to this, looking at, you know, what are the provisions for special events? Also concessions, would those be possible? And the location standards that are linked to the updated master plan. And any questions on public park? And those would just be limited to areas that the city owns. Schedule of regulations, again, Kyle, as you mentioned, this one might be a place where there would be some illustrations. Also, again, we would update it to match the master plan in terms of density and, you know, all the other changes to districts. One thing to talk about here also is setback from natural features, either wetlands, creek and river, creeks and rivers, things like that. But again, these are one of the things that we do last in order to kind of stitch it all together. Any questions? All right. Now, again, part of this proposal is a new article on site condominiums. You did have that article drafted in 2017, so we just go over that draft. But also, what's important to define is when this applies and when the subdivision ordinance applies. And because there's been multiple interpretations of when that is. And so, so we would go through that with staff and also and also others of your technical advisors like engineering. All right, so that's the zoning ordinance. Is anything I missed?
I know you got a lot.
I know you're exhausted, there was nine pages. So just a couple more. So this is subdivision ordinance. Now, this comes into play when, so if something, if if property was annexed and let's say a new neighborhood was going to be built. This is usually when those rules apply, well, new neighborhood, new commercial park, new industrial park. So again, update the intent to what match the to match the master plan and define when it applies and when it doesn't, and have that be very clear. Terms of division two, the definitions, check agreement between ordinances. You kind of had it, you had an instance of that tonight that your staff brought to you. We want to make sure that we clean all those up between these two ordinances. Update them as they need to be. Also, there might be some new definitions that are needed. And again, this is something that we always do, we do in the beginning and we do it at the end. In terms of procedure, this is not self serving to say add city planning consultants. It's just that you have that in the zoning ordinance and you do not have that in the subdivision ordinance. You take us out, then we could take us out of both. Also, cross reference it with the zoning and the appropriate sections. We, you know, probably in this zoning ordinance update, some of the sections are going to change. And so we need to go to the other ordinances that cross reference them and make sure we get it right. For division four, these are design standards. And really, a lot of these design standards are suburban in design. And what we heard through the master plan and seems to be articulated in the master plan is that really they should be a more urban and mimic more the village structure, structure than some of your newer subdivisions. So those design standards need to change then, if that's the intent. Also, you have a commitment to complete streets. And so to make sure every point in here does require those complete streets. Going back to the urban versus suburban, that would get to lot sizes and block sizes and how they're laid out. Also, there was some disagreement on open space regulations between this and the zoning ordinance of what the standard is. So for however many X square feet of residential or how many lots you need to have X open space. And then who maintains it? Should it be the city? Should it be due to the city? It doesn't have to go to a subdivision or condo association. Who is that? And so that's a question we'll need to talk about. And it could be different in different circumstances. And again, as is pointed out before, agreement with the zoning ordinance when it's needed. Any questions on this?
I would just say in general, I would, you know, we, part of these ordinance were written around the historic value of the community without having a historic district. But I think when we redo this, I would hope that that historic, the point that we value are historic buildings that we have is still woven into the ordinance.
We can absolutely do that.
Speaking of solar panels.
Yeah. Speaking of solar panels.
Speaking of solar panels, right.
Right.
Quick question?
Yes.
On this one, it also brings to mind the engineering standards. You know, we have engineering standards driving the development of our roads, what our sidewalks look like, what our curb sizes, all this stuff that, you know, I think that in the current way it's written, we, you have to build a subdivision. You know, so how do these street design standards guide us towards, you know, what are, you know, what are the options essentially? And do that, does that match up with this? I'm not sure, maybe that's all in the subdivision, but I feel like it was somewhere else as well.
It does bring up a good point, there are certain areas where the things we do in either the zoning ordinance or the subdivision control need to have that consistency. Just like we've identified elsewhere in the ordinance, consistency with general code or consistency with X, Y, or Z.
That's a, that's a great point, because we can't be necessarily recommending something that engineering standards don't follow or.
Right. Well, you could. So Kyle, you were going to finish the thought and then Karen, I see you have your hand up.
No, I think you guys are getting it, yeah, so that, you know, just want to make sure it all mastered up.
Thank you.
Karen?
Well, I, I know it's late, so this is not a time to bring up things I've been thinking about. But but and Kyle and I have talked about this over coffee back in the day when you could do that. That, and I don't know if this is where this fits or if it fits in zoning at all. But, you know, I live on Central Street, the road has been redone. And it's, you know, it's spectacular. But I would really be sad to see all of, like Hudson now looks like this. Have see all of Dexter's streets curved and paved the way that Central Street is. I think it would really, you know, it, it's, you know, it would really toy, it would, I think, really challenge the sort of character of the of the community as an old farm town, having a historical value and so on. I think it just changes how things look, it certainly changes how traffic flows. You know, Central Street is just fabulous now. And so does that, would that fit in here when Kyle's mentioning curve curves?
So, um, this is for anything new.
Okay, just.
So you've got to think about, and it's easy to think about what is and what what's going on, especially in a community like yours that's completely built out, right? But you need to, this is where we're asking you to put on a hat. We think about the future and what things are going to look like in the future, either when things are redeveloped or turnover. Or specifically with the subdivision ordinance, if there is a greenfield development that's on the edge of your town and that is annexed into, annexed into Dexter, what should that look like? These rules are the opportunities to dictate what that design is. And we can aim for consistency. We will need to be consistent with the engineering standards. But also, it might be during this process that we may find that there are engineering standards that don't implement the master plan. But then that's a city council decision, that is not something that is in is in planning commission. So while those observations are great, and and I think specifically with subdivision ordinance, think about, you know, either the property, you know, the green areas that are on the edges of the city of Dexter right now, if they were annexed, what should they look like?
Sure.
And they were going to be built out.
Then we, we'll probably have some kind of final report anyway that would outline anything like that.
Well, I mean, what we do is we we work our way through them. And so, and I would encourage you to read the subdivision ordinance, it's very short. Like, it's less than 20 pages. It's not a heavy read. So, and then you can make it some assessments for yourself. But I would say when I, when I read it, it attacks it from a suburban perspective. It doesn't necessarily say that they're going to, you know, and so, and it doesn't dictate some of the things that you need to have in terms of having an urban, urban feel in terms of like length of streets, length of blocks, length of cul de sacs, things like that. All right, well, I want to thank everybody for your time. Please, please, please think about this and email Michelle, myself or Michael and let us know what we missed, what you feel like we need to dig in more deeply with you and with the community as well.
Yeah, I just want to point out, just before we sign off, I know it's getting late. But really quickly, for all the really good planning that's gone on Dexter, mistakes have been made. And I think it's worth pointing out, for example, that Huron Commons, which is kind of tucked behind Huron Farms to the west, who was able to convince somebody to make a private road and they basically created a barrier between Huron Farms and the rest of the village or the city, really did a service to a lot of, disservice to a lot of people. However this happened, there was a private road permitted that did not meet the standards of a typical subdivision road. And it was used to basically create a gated community and block us off from everybody else. And I will always see that as a, it was a really unfortunate mistake that was made. And it's something we don't want to repeat again if we grow in the future.
Yes, Jim, ready?
Yeah, and I'll say that that particular action came back obliquely to sort of bite us in the butt when that one block was opposing the daycare and they were saying, well, essentially, like, why can't we get something like that?
Yeah. They wanted a private road too, sure.
Yeah.
But the irony, of course, is that in order to get to Huron Commons, they have to go through Huron Farms. So while they don't want anybody else's traffic in their little community, they're happy to drive through what quote unquote, other people's community. So it just served to kind of divide the community using a planning, I would call it a planning mistake as a, as an instrument. And that's something I think that's worth kind of looking at in, as we go through the ordinance again.
If I could, Tom, I think if a development like that or that issue came up currently, it would not, it wouldn't get approved. I think there's a recognition. A recognition.
Again, you know, we welcome anything from you, but if the rest of you put on your thinking caps and say, okay, these are planning mistakes or these are zoning mistakes, or these are things that have happened before that I wouldn't want to happen, have happen again, that would be great for for us to hear. And maybe that's a question also we can frame. And can talk more to Michelle about how to, how to go to the city council and to the housing task force if it's still meaning to to get their take on these before, you know, before we, you know, as part of this part of the process.
Sounds good. Everyone, when you email your comments or questions, please send them to myself, CC, Mike and Megan. And I'll make sure everybody gets them. I prefer not to have you just email questions or comments directly to Megan that could accidentally bypass Mike or I, because then we're cut out of the loop, okay?
Yep, sure.
All right, well, thank you for your time and patience, especially this late in the evening. I know this can be a little dry, not everybody finds it as exciting as I do.
Megan, let me ask.
Hard to believe.
Yeah.
Jim, do you think this is a presentation that council should hear from Megan?
I think you could include the pack, you know, the presentation in our packet.
Okay, I was planning on doing that, but I wondered what your thoughts would be on it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just including the presentation would be fine in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think also maybe Megan going forward or Michelle, I mean, there's, right, there's, there's, there's a lot here. I mean, there's so much, if there's a way that, yeah, how we identify and like kind of break it down into like those smaller pieces, even as you, we go through these sections and maybe give us even the timeline in advance, like these sections will be kind of looked at in this, in this, around this date, at this meeting. And then maybe we can focus in on more of those sections because it's going to be hard to, or I'm sure during our session, we'll have a lot more to add.
Right, yeah, no, this is just the first cut to tell you where we are and what we're looking at at big picture. And then on our, on our schedule is to, on our work plan is to, after meeting with, meeting with a few other folks, is to get you a schedule. But I think the other thing, and that way we'd have it set and we would get things to you two weeks beforehand, because these are, things are hard to digest. It takes a lot of time, as I'm sure Matt, you well know, and so.
And our person only took six years, so if we can beat that, actually, maybe seven. Right, so.
Yeah, and then, but also a next step is, you know, who's, who's on the subcommittee? When are we meeting? How are we meeting? And by all means, you know, maybe if we could get that by November, December, then then we can really start rocking and rolling.
So that may be something also, if you guys, if we want a decision at our November meeting on that, it may be helpful, again, to kind of lay out, like, what are the responsibilities of that subcommission? How much are you expected to meet, you know, that that kind of thing? So we can get whoever may volunteer for that. We could get a better idea of the timeline and the time involved with that.
Absolutely.
And yeah, those meetings, those pre meetings that we used to get pizza before, that was a lot more helpful. I mean, Michelle, you have all our addresses, you could just deliver them, you know.
So I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up. You probably are all aware that the Michigan Supreme Court stripped down Governor Whitmer's ability to, and Jim, you can correct me if I use the wrong language, ability to extend, continue to extend out emergency orders. The virtual meetings could be coming to an end as soon as your November meeting. And so staff right now is working to bring options to city council for their meeting on Monday in case that is something that needs to be done. So I can't tell you if you're going to have a virtual meeting next November, or I'm sorry, in November for your next meeting, or if we will actually have a physical space that we're going to be meeting at.
So I will add one more potential complication to you, which is the Washington County Board of Health has very broad powers to. Essentially put the same restrictions into effect that the governor's emergency orders did.
And if I'm not mistaken, they have, Jim, I will email out what we received today. They're pretty close.
Right. We don't talk about this much, but I'm the chair of the Board of Health also. And yet that, that may very well create a problem for us. Because just because they do that doesn't necessarily mean that we're authorized under. Statutes and regulations that govern us to meet remotely. So we may be sort of caught in between not authorized by the state, but barred from meeting by the health department.
Right.
Open Meetings Act is the state. I mean, the county board of health can't overhaul the state Open Meetings Act.
Matt, the county board of health for emergency health reasons can ban groups of certain number of people getting together. And then, you know, that's just.
But that wouldn't allow us to hold virtual meetings though, right? It would just ban us getting together.
Essentially, we would be, we wouldn't be able to meet because we would be unable to meet in person, but we would not be authorized to meet remotely.
Right.
I would hope the Michigan House would pass a special law for that.
There was a, there was something that was introduced into the house last week. To amend the Opens Meeting Act for electronic meetings, but it has to get through the process. So. The scenario that Jim described is very much possible.
Very problematic.
Yes. So just stay tuned, folks.
Yep, stay tuned. All right, so.
Sounds like many, many lawsuits to come.
Hopefully not.
Right.
But you could be very right.
Yes. So anything, any final thoughts for Megan? But I think, got a lot here. So as Michelle said, we've got our instructions for submitting comments in the future. Okay, so with that, we move to item 11, which is a proposed business for the Monday, November 2nd meeting. Michelle, we have anything?
Obviously, what we just talked about as far as subcommittee, et cetera. Um, we've gonna, we're gonna have the liaison to the ZBA to, for you all to vote on. I can't think anything else off the top of my head right now. Okay, other than whatever cleanup we start to do on the.
Kettles.
On the kennels and pet ownership as well as we'll start the process for the working through ADU. Regulations for you to consider, at least the section 307 process. Okay?
Great. Sounds good. So with that, we'll move to citizens wishing to address the commission. As, as our petitioner from Gunther's still waiting on the line, do all that.
Here, she's on the line. Yeah.
There we go. Okay, so at this time, we're at citizens wishing to address the commission. So if there's anybody that would like to address the commission, please raise your hand by hitting star nine on your cell phone.
Oh, hold on. Sorry, let me figure it out.
There we go. Yep, you're on.
Hello, this is Natalie Ciccolini, Gunther Building. And so I just wanted to clarify that our next step then would be to submit. An amendment to Planning Commission. For, to amend the business to business or residential for the first floor. Is that what I understood?
Michelle?
So yes, Natalie, the process, if you formally want to request the conversion or to have the flexibility. You would be requesting an amendment to the final PU date, PUD plan, the PUD agreement and your condo docs. Again, there's no guarantee that they will vote. Make an affirmative recommendation to city council, but that would be the formal process. It gives you the opportunity to provide the justification and demonstration. That you heard the different members of the planning commission say would be needed to have a, a more robust conversation. In order to consider it formally.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Yeah, we were, we were sort of hoping to get a little bit of a vibe there, whether to do it now. Or wait a little bit longer, but we do only have. Two units left to close on, which both will be closing by the end of November. And per, my understanding is, is per the PUD agreement and the master deed, that I would need to do that while the sales period was going on. So.
Well, I would have, I would have probably this, maybe a conversation, you can maybe follow up with some questions with Michelle after. Because there may be some back there, but I think at this point, it's probably more of a staff to discussion. Because planning commission, we can't really get in the back and forth. And I think with the technicalities of it, it's probably the best. Michelle looks at the regulation and responds to you.
I, yeah, we can follow up tomorrow or sometime this week, Natalie and Jessica.
And we can find out that the planning commission can find out the results of that. So I just, at this point, it's probably more. You guys can take that conversation offline and follow up with the results.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission at this time? I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Move Smith?
Support.
Second, I didn't, oh, that's Roberts. Okay, move Smith, support Roberts. Oh, do we need a roll call vote to adjourn?
You can say all in favor.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment, say aye. Opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.